Mr. Crawford?
Here.
This is Ross.
Here.
This is Wolfmeyer.
Here.
This is Butler.
Here.
This is Kostick.
Here.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We really have two meetings today. One is the last meeting of the prior board, and then we reconvene as the new board. And in that process, we typically ask for a board member comments on the year that's just concluded. So I would entertain those comments, and if someone would care to start on that, we could go around the table here. Ms. Ross, would you care to go first here?
Sure. Well, I want to say that it's been challenging, and it's been good.[75.11][75.11](laughing) And that's about it.
Okay. Ms. Kostick?
This year, again, has been -- there've been a lot of events that we've gone through. Lot of good things have happened. Some, the public has agreed with, some they have not. But we, as a board, have tried to make the best decisions in the interest of the children and the district. We look forward to an upcoming year, and whatever it brings, we will do our best to make the decisions that are best for this district. We thank you for those who have supported us for this year, and we hope that you will continue. As a board, we -- I can speak for myself. I look forward to a new year, and the new things that we will bring forward to this district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Crawford?
I would likewise echo the sentiments that this year has been challenging, but I appreciate the administration's efforts in maintaining fidelity to our -- the efforts to improve our curriculum. I think we really see that with the presentations here that we have at board meetings about what we're doing in the schools for the benefit of our kids. And I would urge that we continue to stay the course along those lines, and make sure that we can offer the best and most challenging education for our students in meeting them where they're at in a particular -- in their subjects and courses of study. And as for the public, I would echo Ms. Kostick's sentiments, you know, continuing to keep involved. Certainly, where you're able, please support us. And our lines of communication, we always try to keep them open by either email or phone, and I think we're all available to speak with you, and we'd love to hear from you about your concerns for the district, as we share -- as we have a shared goal in seeing the kids of Peoria have the best education possible.
Thank you, Reverend Butler.
Yes. Again, as others had been saying around the horseshoe, we've had a very interesting and challenging year, and we met those challenges head-on with the interest and the desire to serve this community, being the students, their families, and those who are employed by District 150, and all the community stakeholders, to do what is best for this community. So I believe, and I would say to my fellow colleagues, that there was good board governance that occurred this year, and I think all of us took the opportunity to do things that would make us even more available, accessible, and informed for another year of school board governance. As for the district, we did achieve some things that we had been looking forward to over the last three to four years. So there were major accomplishments in terms of the curriculum and instruction, and to see those things materialize, a lot of them being born or given birth this year, was just great. So I'm looking forward to another school year, and the things that we will see as well. You know, again, welcome, Mr. Will Coxon. Looking forward to working with you this coming year, and others that will be joining us for this year of community service.
Thank you very much. I would just mention a few things that I think we've accomplished this year, and I have a list here, so bear with me. I like lists, and I'm sure you're not surprised. No spreadsheet, just a list.
Thank you.
We've had an increase in advanced placement courses and IB enrollment. We've taken the next steps in the middle years international baccalaureate program. We've completed the Peoria High School renovation and the new science wing. We've continued development of the Woodruff Career and Technical Center. We had noteworthy improvements in DIBL scores across the district. We launched Peoria High School North. We expanded Elite to Harrison Community Learning Center. We continued emphasis and funding of professional development for our teachers and staff. We've had infrastructure and new tools and technology enhancements. We've invested in improved school building security systems. We acquired property to start the Peoria High School Athletic Facilities Program, which will be a remarkable development in that neighborhood. We've disposed of the Prospect Houses that were a lingering issue for some time. We signed a joint agreement on Pathways to Prosperity to engage the business community and other bodies of local government in collaboration with District 150 and the Peoria Federation of Teachers to assure that more of our students are prepared with the education they need to move into a career or into a next step into college. And we've also hired Mark Wilcoxon as our CFO, and Rick Retberg, who is with us today as our chief legal officer. Both of those were opportunities to fill positions that had been open for some time. And we miss Dr. Kinney, but we have Mark Wilcoxon in his place, and we're going to welcome Mr. Retberg here as our chief legal officer. So those are all, I think, really positive developments. There's some key issues for the coming year. One of them is to update the district's strategic plan. We will also be dealing with the reauthorization of the Quest Charter School. We need to move ahead with our Pathways to Prosperity Partners. We have some very serious challenges in terms of our revenue resources and sources, and the budget implications of that from the federal, state, and local level. We need to repair some community relationships that were obviously strained greatly during the past year. We need to do a better job of defining the role of the school resource officers, and we have some decisions about the athletic facilities, and by corollary to that, what happens to Peoria Stadium. So there's plenty to do in the next year, and it'll be a challenge, and I look forward to working on those issues and others. And with that, I would bring that discussion to a close, unless anyone has anything else to add.
I would just add a few comments about your term as President, President Cloyd.
If you must.
Yes, we will. I know it's been a challenging year, but I think you've handled it with a -- what is really -- many of the qualities are exemplary of a true leader. We've obviously had some meetings where there have been some fireworks, and I think you have maintained order and appropriateness in those meetings, and where -- and there are even some times where you yourself acknowledge that you owe a person an apology. And again, those are the kinds of stepping up and facing up to your mistakes are certainly the qualities of a leader. You have brought the level of tenacity, and a level of empathy, and a level of dedication to the role of president that I think is something we can all admire and attempt to emulate. It really takes that kind of leadership to be effective in this particular role. I would also acknowledge your efforts outside of this horseshoe. The president and other board officers are often called to attend additional meetings and go attend various events on behalf of the board to communicate the board's interests, and also to hear from others, including city and county officials or folks in the community. And you have done all of that rising to the challenge that it fills up a schedule. It really is a full-time job. And so we thank you, and on behalf of the board, I would like to present you with the small token for your service for this past year. Thank you.
Thank you.[583.54][583.54](applause) Should I open it now?
You're welcome to. It's a plaque and a gift certificate, so.
That's very nice. Thank you very much.
Mr. Cloyd?
Yes, ma'am.
I was just wondering, we all had something to say about the school year, and in your presentation, you also mentioned the things to look forward to. I'm just wondering at this time if Dr. Lathan has anything she would like to say.
Well, that was going to be my last step.[620.04][620.04](laughing) So, Dr. Lathan, would you care to add your comments?
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Cloyd, for highlighting the accomplishments of this school year. We did have a challenging school year, but it was an exciting school year in urban education. That will happen. I agree that we need to continue to focus and move forward for the upcoming school year. We're going to continue our mission to try to work together with our partners in the community, excited about the upcoming school year and all the opportunities that we have available for our children. I like the way Mr. Crawford stated that, not only a quality education, but a challenging education for our students. And I think that's all parents want, is to make sure that when their children graduate, not only from Peoria Public Schools, but any school in our country, that their children are ready for the next stage. And as all of our parents used to tell us that we could get out of our house, and we keep -- continue to say that. But it is still an honor to continue to serve as your superintendent, and I thank the board, entire board, for your leadership. I don't think the community knows the amount of time, like you said, that you invest behind the scenes, and the amount of time that we spend together getting to know each other. There are some good days, and there are some challenging days. But I do thank you for your leadership, Mr. Cloyd. And also, in Ms. Wolfmeyer's absence, I thank you all as officers for your leadership this year, because it has been a challenging year, and there were times that we had to talk at 1:00 in the morning, or 5:00, and all board members, they were receiving phone calls, "I need to talk to you. Give me a call," individually. So I thank you so much for giving up your time, and thank your families for the time that they had to also give up, when you had to step out of the room, and they couldn't understand or hear the conversation. So thank you again to the entire board. Excited about our new team members, Mr. Wilcoxon, and also Mr. Retberg, that are joining us. We've picked on Mark, and every day we ask, "Are you coming back?" Next day, every morning, when I walk by his office, I look in and make sure he's still there, and he's still smiling, so that's a good sign. Rick, thank you for joining us and relocating back to Illinois, so we're excited to have you in the birthplace of your father. So thank you, and welcome aboard. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lathan. With no other comments to make at this moment, I would call for a motion to adjourn Sinead I.
So moved.
Second.
Were adjourned as the old board. Ms. Wilson-Holmes, would you please join us here? Welcome.
Thank you.
Is your microphone on there?
Red light.
The button?
It is now.
Okay, good. Would you -- let's call this to order, and do we need another roll call here at this moment? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Crawford?
Here.
Ms. Wilson-Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
Mrs. Wolfmeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Butler?
Here.
Mrs. Kostick?
Here.
Mr. Cloyd?
Here. The next item is the election of the chairman pro temp to proceed with the next items of business on the agenda. Typically, the outgoing president serves that role, which I would be happy to do unless there's objection.
I would move that we appoint President Cloyd, or Mr. Cloyd, to the position of chairman pro temp.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Wilson-Holmes?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Six five zero.
The next item is the recognition of the elected board member. Ms. Wilson-Holmes, from District 3, welcome.
Thank you.
And you have before you an oath of office, which each board member, upon their taking the office, is asked to read, and if you could do so, that would be great.
Sure. I, Susie Wilson-Holmes, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Board of the Board of Education of Peoria Public Schools in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and the laws of the State of Illinois, to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayer interest by serving as a faithful protector of the school district's assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others who seek a hearing before the board, while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has no legal authority as an individual, and that decisions can be made only by a majority vote at a public board meeting, and I shall abide by majority decisions of the board while retaining the right to seek changes in such decisions through ethical and constructive channels.
Thank you. The next agreement is -- the next item is the adoption of the board agreement on focus of the work of the board and the board and code of conduct. Ms. Wilson-Holmes, it's your choice when you care to make your statement, whatever you'd like to do. We can do that later, or we can do that now. Which would you?
I could do that now.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I just have a quick statement now. When I started my campaign, I had every intention of running, campaigning on the issues that I felt needed addressed, and bringing a new voice to this board. Circumstances changed, and I was unable to follow through with my plans. While I am healthier now, I will not go back on my word to resign. I waited until today to give people time to decide if they wanted to throw their hat in the ring and become part of the change needed in our district. I recommend this board choose someone representative of our community, and I have my letter here. I have a copy for everyone, but I will hand them all to Jenny.
You can just give that to the board secretary. Thank you. And my assumption here is this is effective at this moment, then?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry we have to ask you to leave.[994.12][994.12](laughing)
I understand.[996.12][996.12](applause)
Mr. Crawford?
Yes. Mr. Cloyd, in light of Ms. Wilson-Holmes' resignation --
Do you have it?
As a result of her resignation and consistent with Board Policy 2:70, I would move that the board accept Ms. Wilson-Holmes' resignation, that the board direct the administration to issue a news release requesting qualified persons interested in applying for the vacant third district seat to notify the board secretary and provide a resume by noon on Friday, July 11. And the board direct the administration to notify the regional superintendent of education of this vacancy within five days.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Clarification.
Please.
Is that correspondence coming from the board secretary or administration?
I believe administration.
Well, the secretary as a member of the administration as well.
As a member, yeah.
We just need to make sure that we notify the regional office formally within five days of the resignation. So we have a motion, and a second. Is there any discussion of that? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Five five zero.
Thank you. The next issue is the adoption of the board agreement on the focus of the work of the board and code of conduct. Repose action is that the Board of Education adopt for 2014-15 Peoria Public Schools Board Agreement on the Focus of the Work of the Board and the Code of Conduct. Could I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? There being none, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Five five zero.
And that document will be passed around for signature, as I understand it. The next item is the election of the secretary pro temp. We would ask for a nomination.
Yes, I would nominate Joan Bastian as secretary pro temp.
Second.
Any other nominations? Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Aye. Therefore, Ms. Bastian is secretary pro temp. Adoption of the rules and policies of the new board. The proposed action is that the rules and policies of the immediate past board be the rules and policies of the new board. Could I have a motion to that effect, please?
Second.
Any discussion? I would add that there are a number of items in my review of some of those issues that are going to require us to update them because of the change in language or because of changes in state statute, and we'll get the policy committee to work on that, I think, so. Any further discussion on the motion? Could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
Aye.
Mr. Cloyd?
Aye.
Five five zero.
Thank you. We've now come to the place on our agenda where members of the public may address the school board on any topic. Please come to the podium and give your name for the benefit of our minutes. The time limit for any one speaker is two minutes, and the time limit for any one topic is eight minutes. No person less than 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by his or her parent, guardian, or teacher, except with the unanimous consent of the board. And our first speaker is Terry Knapp.
Says here that I may request up to five minutes. Is that not correct?
Not in this meeting.
Is this a committee of the whole, or, I mean, why are we?
This is a meeting of the school board.
Why are we limited to two minutes?
This is a special meeting of the school board.
Last year, we were allowed five. It's in the agenda from last year. Okay. I'm Terry Knapp, 922 West Willshire Drive, Peoria. I would like to address the most important things. First, last meeting, Sharon Cruz made a comment about seeing America through black eyes, and it was basically referred to, I think, by the administration that unless you're black, you can't identify with what went on during slavery or anything else. This is a book written by a black gentleman. It's called White Folks: Seeing America Through Black Eyes. I've given Ms. Bastian a couple copies. I hope the board checks those out and reads them. I was appalled by the chair allowing members of the administration and the audience to chastise Ms. Cruz at the last meeting. I think it was unprofessional. You claim to be educated. I have three degrees. I'm educated. And, you know, if you're educated, that should never occur. She was personally attacked. It was out of character for this board. It was out of character for this community. At the same time, Mr. Bailey then writes an editorial about Sunnis and Shiites, or Shia, in the newspaper. You have a copy of my response to that, which you will never see in the Journal Star, because I'm sure the Journal Star will not print it. And it's basic. It's one paragraph, and I'd like to read it with you. You have it before you. Says, "If only Mr. Mike Bailey could have the final and only word on everything, the world would be a better place," in Bailey's mind. Bailey's opinion can appear every day. Peoria and West Peoria taxpayers are able to express themselves for seven minutes a month at board meetings. According to Mike Bailey, this is probably too much. Have a great day, and I think you're out of line by not having five minutes today.
Thank you. Sharon Cruz.
The last board meeting was one for the record books. I was taken aback when an administrator in the audience began shouting, "Black eyes, black eyes," in reaction to my comment that my students taught me to see the world through their black eyes. I am still not certain as to why the metaphor elicited such a strong reaction. A search on the Internet led me to the possibility that the term "black eyes" has come to mean a symbol of child abuse. However, how could anyone interpret my comments as anything having whatsoever to do with child abuse? In my Internet searches you've just heard, I inadvertently and happily found the book White Folks: Seeing America Through Black Eyes, which I am passing on to you. This very provocative book was written by Chicago-born Lowell Thompson, one of the first black men to be hired and to have a successful career in advertising. Dr. Lathan screamed at me that I can never understand the African-American experience. There is no doubt that I can never experience slavery or racism firsthand. However, I have been lucky enough to have many African-American friends, one seated around your table. My students and adult friends who have trusted me with many heartrending stories about their experiences, and the stories that have been handed down to them about family members who have suffered. In fact, this book only reinforced what I had already learned about racism in America. If I could only read the rest of my comments, but... Dr. Lathan, your most stunning admission and accusation was that you seemed to believe strongly that the people to whom you were speaking last week, month, are scared that District 150, under your leadership, is teaching children to read. I find your comment to be frightening, even though I do understand that an effort to keep slaves from learning to read is very much a deplorable part of our history. Laurie interrupted my comments, and I would finish later.
Thank you. Sabino Sierra.
Sabino Sierra, 1708 Stanley Street. All I can say is I hope you do a lot better than you did this last time that you've been up there. And you were bragging down at City Hall Superintendent that you got the steps finished, but you didn't complete the task, you know? You're too busy trying to make a name, making all the, you know, new stuff at Central, but you don't take care of the business of getting that stadium put together. There's cement work to do on the second tier of the steps at the front of that Peoria Central. The lions are decaying. You haven't repaired them either. So, and, you know, my big thing is I'm interested in the upkeep of our physical plants. Being a -- I worked in construction for 50 years. I know, you know, I know what's going on, and what needs to be done. But you say, you people say you listen, but it must go in one ear and not the other, because a lot of it isn't being done. So I hope you take care of that pretty soon. And that's all I got to say in two minutes, and I'll be back next meeting.
Thank you. Cheryl Budzinski.
Cheryl Budzinski, 623 West Stratford, Peoria. I'm here for the League of Women Voters. We'd like to thank you all for letting us register students, high school students, this year. I think we registered almost 300 students between the three high schools. And I want to tell you that they were very well behaved, very nice. Faculty was great, they helped us set this up. I would ask you, though, when I had included some information about it, when I asked to set up the voter registration, about allowing excused absences for those students, they have to be juniors or seniors, to become election judges. It's very hard to get election judges who can hear. A lot of the election judges are getting older, as am I, and I noticed in poll watching that that was a definite problem. And I know that the City Election Commission just has really loved working with the high school kids as election judges. I know that Dunlap allows them excused absences. And it's not every student, they have to have the principal's permission, the parent's permission, they have to have, I think, a 3.0, grade point average. But they do get paid. They get paid something like $150. They do have to take six, I'm sorry, four hours of training, and the day is long. I don't know if all of them can get up at 5:30 to be there when the polls open, and they stay until possibly 7:30 or 8:00. So I would just ask you to consider, and I realize that there was a bill in the legislature allowing this excused absence, but I think there may be some discretion among the board. Thank you.[1761.44][1761.44](applause)
Timothy Gorman.
Timothy Gorman, 3804 West Eagle Point Drive, Peoria.
Could you move the microphone upstairs? There you go.
Timothy Gorman, 3804 West Eagle Point Drive, Peoria. Many years ago, I was an English teacher at Manuel High School, my first full-time position anywhere. And I remember the afternoon, another faculty member came position anywhere, and I remember the afternoon, another faculty member came to me after school and said, "Tim, we need you to join the Peoria Federation of Teachers." At that point, I decided to leave teaching. I didn't need to join the union. I hope the Board will always keep this in mind. If you are an excellent employee, never mind what kind of work you may be doing, private, public, if you do excellent work, you do not need a union. If you do very good work, you do not need a union. If you do good work, you probably don't need a union. So only lesser-performing employees need unions. The unions don't care what happens to you anyway. They need your dues to apply to political efforts, but they don't let you help them decide which political efforts. You make the contribution, the union votes or uses the money to do what it wishes. Anything that has to do with unions, a public board like this should always push back. And good luck with it, but always push back.
That concludes the public comment portion of the meeting. Dr. Lathan or members of the Board, any responses to those comments today? Okay. At this point, we will proceed with the election of officers for the new Board for the 2014-2015 school year, term beginning today, ending June 30th, 2015. At this point, we would take nominations for President of the Board. Nominations do not require a second.
Mr. President?
Reverend Butler.
President Pro Tem. I would like to nominate Mrs. Debbie Wolfmeyer as President of the Board of Education for the 2014-2015 school year. Mrs. Wolfmeyer is not here due to a prior commitment, but she did express interest and accept it to be nominated for Board President.
Thank you. Ms. Kasten.
And I respectfully would like to nominate Martha Ross for President for the 2014-15 school year.
Thank you. At this point, then, unless there are any other nominations, there being none, I assume we call the roll and take the name of the individual for whom each board member votes.
Mr. Crawford?
Wolfmeyer.
Mrs. Ross?
Mrs. Ross.
Mrs. Butler?
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Mrs. Kasten?
Mrs. Ross.
Mr. Floyd?
Mrs. Wolfmeyer.
Three votes for Mrs. Wolfmeyer, two for Mrs. Ross.
Therefore, Mrs. Wolfmeyer is elected. In the absence of Mrs. Wolfmeyer, I will have to continue as President Pro Tem until we elect a Vice President. The floor is open for nominations for Vice President.
Mr. President, I would nominate Linda Butler as, Ms. Linda Butler, as Vice President for the 2014-2015 School Board Term.
Thank you. Any other nominations? There being none, can we do that by acclamation? Or do we call a roll? Then let's call a roll.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Nay.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kasten?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Therefore, Reverend Butler is elected Vice President, and in the absence of the newly-elected President, this becomes your opportunity to chair the meeting, so Reverend Butler, let's trade chairs here. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have what you need for the rest of your agenda?
Next on the agenda is that we appoint the Secretary, Assistant Secretary, Treasurer, and Attorney for the 2014-2015 school year. The proposed action, that Joan L. Bastian be appointed Secretary of the Board of Education, that Kena Brown be appointed Assistant Secretary of the Board of Education, that Mark Wilcoxen be appointed the Chief Financial Officer, that Richard Redberg be appointed Chief Legal Officer, and Hodges, Loisey, Eisenheimer, Roderick, and Cohen be appointed outside counsel.
So moved.
Second.
Just as a matter of introduction, Mr. Redberg is here, and we won't go into all of his details, of his background, but I believe you served a total of seventeen years on a School Board in?
Donners Grove.
In Donners Grove, and seven of those years as President of the Board.
I think ten years as President.
Ten years as President. You have my sympathies. Mr. Redberg comes to us from Nashville. He is former General Counsel for the United Methodist Church. Is that correct, sir?
Close enough.
Close enough. And he has, what, twenty years of litigation experience in professional practice?
Twenty-nine years.
Twenty-nine years. Well, I didn't read the resume recently, so. And you are returning to the Illinois area after serving in Nashville for some time, so. I would just make that point, that this is a gentleman with a good deal of legal and school experience in the State of Illinois, so. With that?
With that, Madam Secretary, you may call the roll.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kasten?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Before we go to the next item, again, Mr. Redberg, if you would just stand for all to see you, and of course, to know who we voted in with the new face, and of course, Mr. Wilcoxen, who's been here for some of our meetings. Ms. Brown, would you please stand as well, now as Assistant Board Secretary, and of course, Ms. Bastian, who is here? Thank you all. I guess I'll just go ahead and do the consent agenda unless someone else wants to read it.
Okay.
One, two?
If you'd like me to, I can.
Go right ahead. Help yourself. He's good at this.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Tonight, today's consent agenda consists of item number one, the Human Resources Report. Proposed action, appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee. Item number two, interim payments. Proposed action, that the Board of Education approve the school district's expenditure of funds to defray necessary and proper expenses and liabilities of the school district incurred for educational or operations and maintenance or transportation or site and construction purposes of the district, until which time the annual budget of the district is adopted in conformity with applicable sections of the Illinois School Code. Item number three, resolution approving the Illinois School District Liquid Asset Fund plus Certificate of Deposit Program, known as ISDLAF plus. Proposed action, that the resolution be approved as presented. Item number four, resolution authorizing inter-fund transfers and loans and authority to invest funds. Proposed action, that the resolution be approved as presented. Item number five, tax deductions. Proposed action, that the resolution be approved as presented. Item number six, resolution designating depositories. Proposed action, that the resolution designating depositories be approved. Item number seven, resolution approving treasurer's bond. Proposed action, that the resolution providing for a fifteen million treasurer's bond be approved. Item number eight, prevailing wage. Proposed action, that the resolution establishing prevailing wage rates in compliance with Illinois statutes be adopted, and that a copy of this resolution be filed with the Secretary of State and the Department of Labor by the Secretary of the Board of Education. Madam Vice President, that concludes the items on today's consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. Would anyone like to have any of these items pulled, any of the items pulled for separate Being none, may I have a motion to accept these items?
So moved.
Madam Secretary, call the roll.
Could we have, before we vote, could we have, there was one question raised on the issue of depositories, I believe, and Mr. Wilcoxen, this dealt with the issue of how the funds are allocated and versus the fees associated with the deposits and so forth. If you could address that.
Sure. Board policy lays out the objectives for investments, authorized investments, and selection of depositories for district funds. The criteria in the Board policy is selection of depositories based on creditworthiness, reputation, minimum capital requirements, qualifications under state law, and history of dealing with public entities over time. So each year, we base our recommendations to this Board based on those criteria. We also do a due diligence check of the financials of the depositories presented to you today to make sure that they're meeting the Board's criteria.
And just to further that, I think the question that arose was the relative difference between the interest earned and the fees charged, and I think that was the point of that discussion, if I recall, or the question, as I recall it.
Sure. When you look at, in total, for our last bank statements, the actual interest earned did exceed the service charges of the depositories. There are some depositories where we have smaller balances, and we do that as a convenience to school principals who need to deposit funds on a daily basis. So some depositories don't have large balances, and the service fees could exceed the interest earned, but in total, for the district, the interest, excuse me, does exceed the service
Does that satisfy the question? Okay. Thank you. No further discussion.
All right. Thank you. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Kasten?
Aye.
Mr. Floyd?
Aye.
Bye-bye, zero, may we proceed?
Next is presentation and suggestions by Board members. Well, we'll be starting committee work now and in the coming years, so there's nothing to report, so there are no reports from Board Committees, other than, Mr. Cloy, you did say that the Policy Committee will be taking some things up as we start the new year.
Well, we'll see.
Okay. All right. Well, may I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.